All right. I don't have a gavel. I don't plan on using a gavel, so if you could just pay attention. I'm going to call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting Thursday, August 18th. It is 7:03 PM with the Lakeville Library. This meeting is being recorded by LakeCam. Is anyone in the audience recording this meeting? So before I jump into the agenda, obviously, I am assuming the majority of the folks are here for the second agenda item, the residences at LaBarren Hills. I'm going to take a couple, or at least one item out of order, just so that we can not have to have everyone parade around. I'm assuming the LaBarren hearing is going to go a little long because I'm sure folks want to speak up, and I want to give everybody an opportunity to express their opinions or ask their questions or whatnot. So is Ms. Dixon here for the first hearing? Okay, well, before we reopen that hearing, I am going to jump to agenda item number three, the Solano 29 Pilgrim Road hearing. And we are looking to see if we can get a copy of an updated set of plans, which is one of the conditions. So, Mrs. Solano, do you have an updated copy?
Does anybody else have one?
Everybody in the room. Well, I'll take it. Okay. One down that end. Thanks.
That's what we asked for.
Yeah, you need to, right? Take a little. I'm going to give it to the engineer.
No, that's what we asked for.
So.
It's stamped by a pink, so it's fine.
You can keep the rest of it.
That's fine.
Everyone happy with the?
That's what we asked for.
Copy submitted. Mark, you good with it?
What was the condition as it related to the garage?
Basically, we passed them to the garage back even to the front of the building.
Yeah.
Right.
And then it's a 13 by 20-foot garage. It used to be 20 by 20, then it was 16, now it's 13. So they did everything we asked them to do.
Mark just wants to make sure it matches the conditions in the permit.
Okay, so they have reduced it. Okay. So in order to keep the lot coverage at 25%, you shrunk the width of the garage.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's what I was trying to figure out why it was exactly in light that shrunk, so.
The dream garage is gone, but you have a garage.
Yes.
The dream garage is gone, but you still have a garage.
As I said.
Yes.
Can you guys speak up?
They adjusted the size of the garage to make sure they met the impervious coverage. Would you like to see your copies? If anybody wants to see a copy of it, you're more than welcome to come up. Ask the chairman, please. Yes.
Should I speak now or come back?
You can make a comment.
I wrote enough for another letter.
Yeah.
That I know you guys have. And so would this include any, could he do anything else with the way this is? I know it's aligned with the house, which I want to make sure that it is. And could he add a fence, or could he add like a more like gazebo area, draw a pavement? Would that mess up the impervious area?
You could confirm all of this with the building commissioner, but I believe a pen has not going to mess up any, to your point, mess up any of the impervious area. If he puts a gazebo and if he puts any type of area that basically rainwater cannot absorb into the ground, that does constitute changing the impervious area.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Again, this, we're just confirming that the plans, the engineered plans are accurate, so. Do you have a question? No, I don't make a comment in regard to this. Okay, well, if no one else on the board has any questions or concerns, this has already been approved. We just had a condition that he needed to update us with an accurate set of plans, which he has, so good luck.
Thank you.
I get to vote to accept that one?
Should we vote to accept? Yes. We've already.
Yeah, you should vote.
Excuse me. I do have some questions, just in regards to the private way that is there now.
Come up to the podium, Mr. -- state your name and your address.
My name's Lisa Phillips. My client's Keating, who has two lots on the left-hand side.
Okay, is this question in regards to the set of plans, specifically to the set of plans that's being submitted tonight?
It's in regards to the road.
Yeah. Unfortunately. Are you asking about LaBarren? Unfortunately, that has nothing to, unfortunately, all we're doing tonight, all this was posted for is to accept the plans to make sure that they were stamped and accurate.
But the notice that went out mentioned all the changes that were taking place.
Are you talking LaBarren Hills? This is a different hearing. We haven't opened up the LaBarren permit yet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that.
That would have been quite. If we were getting ready to go on that, that would have been.
Well, it was really hard to hear back there.
Okay, I make a, go ahead. I make a motion, we accept the plans.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We're good to go. That's it. We need one, I think.
No, she has two.
Oh, she has two.
Okay, so my question is Dixon's not here. Mark, you can, Mark.
Yes.
She isn't here. We motion to continue it without her requesting it, I think.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Well, the other petitioner is not here. Where? Did you say there she is?
No, I said especially since she's not here.
She's here?
There she is. I think that's her.
Nope, that's not her. Okay. Well, what I'm going to do then is rather we can either continue it, or we can start the LaBarren hearing, and if she does show up, we can, she'll have to wait, but we can do her afterwards.
Well.
But you're leaving.
I got to get out of here.
Yes, so I will accept a motion to continue the Dixon hearing until our September meeting, which is what? September 15th, I think you told me, right? Yeah, September 15th. Anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'm going to open the residents at LaBarren Hills LLC at this point, and does anyone need to recuse themselves?
I need to accuse myself.
Okay, so we will let you leave, and then we can go from there. Is the air, who'd you say, is the air conditioner on, or is it just not? It just came on, okay. All right, so agenda item number two, residents at LaBarren Hill. They have a request to modify their comprehensive permit and reduce the number of dwellings in phase three from 77 to 74, add three 10-unit buildings, one five-unit building in phase five, add additional parcels of land located on FERNAB to the comprehensive permit, change existing emergency-only access from FERNAB to full access to the development to allow the construction of phase six, which will consist of 36, which will consist of three 36-unit four-story buildings, and increase the total number of units from 386 to 419. Let me just make sure I don't need to read this in. Hey, you showed up at the perfect time, just over 100 in LaBarren, so.
Amy's right behind me.
Amy's right behind me, okay. So if you folks don't mind bearing with me for a minute or two, I believe town council is also going to be attending, and according to my fellow members, she's behind us, right?
If you have another quick agenda, I mean, we might want to jump to that and then come back if you haven't opened.
We don't.
You don't. I would say five minutes.
Yeah, one, it was perfect. Minutes. We have minutes from, which meeting was it? Minutes from the July 28th meeting. Everyone reviewed those yet? Anyone reviewed them? I have. Want to make a motion? I'll be second. We have a second.
A second, yeah.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. That bought us 15 seconds. For the record, Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Laws Chapter 40B as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, August 18th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Precinct Street, upon the petition of residences at LaBarren Hills LLC to modify their comprehensive permit granted on June 17, 2004, and filed with the Town Board on June 18, 2004. The original permit was to build 386 units of age-restricted housing consisting of duplexes and multifamily apartment buildings located on multiple parcels of land between Rhode Island Road and Precinct Street, now known as LaBarren Estates. The proposal is to modify and reduce the number of dwellings in phase three from 77 to 74, add three 10-unit buildings and one five-unit building in phase five, add additional parcels of land located on FERNAB to the comprehensive permit, change existing emergency-only access from FERNAB to full access of the development to allow the construction of phase six, which will consist of three 36, three 36-unit four-story buildings, and increase the total number of units from 386 to 419 as provided by the Lakeville Bylaws. The application and the sort of documents can be viewed and have been able to be viewed in the planning department by appointment or on the town of Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals webpage. So the documents have been made available. Before council gets here, I guess, I'm assuming most folks in here have probably not had to attend a meeting like this before, so maybe just for clarification, a couple, I mean, the ground rules really are, there's a podium up here. There's a process at which point I will ask the public for comment. At that point, please come up in an orderly fashion, make sure you state your name and your address for the record, and then you can ask a question, you can make a comment. Everything goes through the board, for me as the chair. So if you have a question for the developer, if you have a question for the town planner or town council, ask it through me, and then I will, you know, ask them to answer it. We don't want this to turn into people asking people in the audience a question, or someone else asking someone else a question. Don't yell out questions from the audience. Again, I realize this is probably the first time most folks have had to come to a meeting like this, please try to not ask repetitive questions. If someone's made a point that something you don't like, something you do like, there's, we really don't want that question or that point to be made three or four times. All that does is prolong and lengthen outside the meeting time. So if you could keep kind of those ground rules in the back of your head, it would be appreciated, not just by me, but probably everybody on this board and everyone else in the audience as well. So having said that, I think before I ask the petitioner to come up and talk about what he's going to do, I am going to ask our town planner, Mark has distributed some information on us, and I think it's a good exercise for us to go through, just because I'm not sure. If you heard me read into the record the notice, this project was actually permitted in 2004, so 19 years ago, by mistake. I'm not sure how many folks realized that it was permitted that long ago. This is just a modification. It's a change they're asking to do to the project. Now.
Substantial change.
Again, remember what I said? If you have a comment, you can come up and make that point. The developer has already agreed that they feel it's a substantial change. They could have come to us and said, we're going to make an argument that it's not substantial, that it really doesn't have any effect on anyone, and we would have determined whether we thought it was substantial or not. But the developer, basically through their attorney, has agreed that, yes, we think this is substantial, we think we should have a public hearing on it. So there's no argument there that anyone thinks it isn't substantial, including the developer. So they agree that it is substantial, but again, it is a modification. It's not like we're going to undo anything that's already been permitted. They're looking to make some changes to the permit. So keep in mind, what we're discussing tonight is that. It's about this phase of the project and potentially going forward, what they want to do. It's not about, I don't like what's happened here, I didn't like what happened there. Unfortunately, I've searched, there is no time machine out there, so we can't go back and undo anything this board did. And for the record, I believe the vast majority of us, if not all of us, weren't even on the board when this thing got permitted back in 2004. I may have potentially been a social member, but I don't remember if I was, I was probably 12 years old at that point in time, but in any case. So having said that, Amy, we saved you a seat, Amy. Mark, you want to just kind of go through chronologically what happened from the beginning, when it got permitted, and any modifications or changes that have happened since then?
Okay, so Kathy has compiled a history by going through. Okay, we have compiled a history of the permitting of the development since 2004. In 2004, the comprehensive permit was granted to LaBarren Residential LLC by the zoning board for the construction of 386 units, and with the following breakdown. 160 condominium units and 80 duplex cottages, 181 condo units and two independent living buildings, 45 rental units and an assisted living building in 97 units, 25% shall be restricted in perpetuity. So of that total. The project proposes these four phases. Phase one was going to be 62 cottage units. Phase two was 98 cottage units. Phase three was 181 multifamily condos, and phase four was the assisted living building. So then, so that was the original approval in 2004. In 2008, they came in for a modification, and the zoning board approved the modification that phase one, when completed, will contain a total of 62 units. And phase two was modified to be 100% affordable, 56-unit rental building instead of the two-family cottage units. The zoning board then in 2011 approved a modification to remove the age-restricted that at least one resident be over 55. This did not apply to the 62 townhouses and the 56 apartment rentals, but the remaining 268 units that were to be built are not required to be age-restricted. The board found that this became necessary because of changes in the real estate market that made the sale of restricted units difficult and problematic. Then in 2016, five years later, the zoning board approved the modification for phase three, which consisted of 77 non-age-restricted ownership, single-family dwellings with no affordable units. After the construction of phase three, the project was to have 195 units with 118 age-restricted and 62 affordable. Two years later, in 2018, the zoning board approved the modification for the proposed for phase four and phase five, which included additional land being added to the project. Phase four consists of 16 duplex units for a total of 32, and phase five consists of four multifamily dwellings to contain a total of 54 units. Eight of those units will be affordable. The additional land consisted of four acres, and it was to be used for the second roadway out to Rhode Island Road. In 2020, the zoning board approved the modification to eliminate some of the sidewalks in the project, I believe that was in the single-family neighborhood, and to modify the side and rear yard setbacks to allow one accessory building within five feet of the lot lines. And then today, the board is reviewing the modification to reduce the number of dwellings in phase three from 77 to 74, to add the three 10-unit buildings and one five-unit building in phase five, to add additional parcels of land located on FERNAB, to change the emergency access on FERNAB to a full access to the development, to allow the construction of phase six, consists of three 36-unit four-story buildings, and to increase the total number of units from 386 to, I believe it was 419. So that's the history of what's occurred here since 2004.
Thanks, Mark. I felt it was important to put that out there, just because, again, I think a lot of folks who have moved into LaBarren Estates, more so recently than previously, may not be aware that this project has been going on for quite a while. I know there are a lot of people who do know it has been going on, but don't necessarily know the history. So hopefully, that history may have answered a few questions, probably not too many, but at least now everyone can kind of follow where we started. At this point, again, I'm going to get you one second, the petitioner, but what I would like to do, and again, I'm trying to let the audience understand, this project, and more importantly, how 40Bs work, I'm going to ask council if they could kind of give us an overview as to what abilities this board has, what our role is in how it incorporates into, you know, the 40B project in general, and what the guidelines are, type of a deal, kind of a five-minute, how it is.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amy Questle, town council. This project is a 40B project, which means that it can seek waivers from zoning, which it did in 2004, can seek waivers from the zoning bylaw to create a project that is 25% affordable. This project is, was granted in phases, and so they've had to come back for the different phases, and it just so happens that sometimes when they come back for the phases, the phases have changed, so they've sought modifications. When, under 40B, when looking at a modification request, when reviewing a modification request, that is the only thing that you can consider. So really, in this memo, the only thing that we can consider tonight is 8/18/2022, which is what they're proposing now. So we can't really go back in time and look at the whole project as an overview. And again, with 40B, as I think this board is aware, our hands are somewhat tied because the state is, or the Commonwealth is extremely interested in affordable housing, and so what happens in situations like this when we're considering a 40B, we want to try and work with the applicant to get the best project that we can. If we outright deny the project, the applicant goes to the Housing Appeals Committee, which is HAC, and the HAC has a, probably a 97% rate of overturning cities and towns, probably it could be a 99% at this point. And then the applicant will get whatever the applicant asks for in their application. So what, the normal course is to go over what the applicant is proposing. There is no, there's no provision on asking the applicant to change a few things, to tweak things, to make the project more desirable, and there are certain parameters that, you know, the applicant has to follow. They have to give us all of the information, however, they don't have to give us 100% plans. They really only have to give us preliminary plans, which is the reason why a lot of 40Bs are modified, because at the beginning and all through the process, the board has never given complete plans, they're only given concept plans, but that is in the regulations, we really can't change that. And Lakeville, unfortunately, is only around 6% with their affordables. To get safe harbor, we have to be at 10% or more, and I don't want to sound like the bearer of bad news, but unfortunately, we're at 6% under the 2010 census. The 2020 census will be coming out, it's been delayed, obviously, because of COVID, but once the 2020 census comes out, the number will drop. So it's anticipated that numbers will drop 2% to 3% on the SHI, so we could be knocked back down to about 4% or 3% affordable, which makes that climb, you know, even higher. But the way to get to 10% is to, is to get the SHI numbers with good projects.
Thank you very much for that explanation. So just for everyone's education, you know, our role here is, as council pointed out, you know, the state dictates how 40Bs work. Our role here is to work with the developer and try to get something that is as palatable as possible. We don't have the ability, there is no magic wand that says, listen, this is what the community wants, you need to do it this way. This developer, any developer can go to the state and can realistically get what they want. Now, that doesn't mean they can just run roughshod and do whatever they want, but having said that, I just want everyone clear that, you know, we don't have the ability just to say, no, that's it, go away, you got to go home, type of a deal. So just keep that in mind. Again, I want to take as many questions as we can, I just don't want them to be repetitive. So at this point, I think what I am going to do is, I'm just going to read, actually, I'm going to wait and do this in a second. I'll actually have, finally, the developer present and tell us a little bit about what they're going to do with this next phase.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mohammed Ayten, and I work for the developer, the residences at LaBarren Hills. This project that, like the chairman said, the community was approved for 386 units, and we were coming in front of the board for.
Mohammed, can I cut you off just for one second?
Sure.
I know you guys set this up, so he talks to us, but can the folks in the back of the room hear him?
No.
If you don't mind, I'm sorry, why don't you turn it like facing the camera? I'm not worried about you facing us. I'm going to make sure everybody, because what's going to happen is if they don't hear you, they're going to come up and ask a question about something you just said, so.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Mohammed Aitani. I'm with the residences of LeBaron Hills. We're the current developer of the community. As the chairman mentioned before, the community was approved for 386 dwellings, of which we've built so far around 100 and, 218 or so. That changes by the day, you know, every time we have a closing, the number change. And with the, with the phases that we have already approved, we have 279 units that have already been approved, that consist of Phase One through Five. So we still have 107 units to build. So this phase, we're coming in front of the board, we're asking the board to allow us to expand Phase Five, to add buildings that are similar to Phase Five, slightly less in size and in volume, and put them between the multifamily building that's there and the condos that are already in Phase Five. Phase Five are the 12 and 14-unit buildings that are currently under construction. And then we wanted to add to that Phase Six. Now, in order for us to add Phase Six, which we're, we're asking the board to approve three 36-unit buildings, we had to eliminate three single-family homes from Phase Three. So Phase Three will drop from 77 to 74. And then that will give us 419 total units. So that will be 33 units more than the original approval. Mass housing, in their literature, which is, which is the state authority that approves those projects, allowed up to 10% increase in the number of units without calling it a substantial increase. Actually, they give that example in their, in their narrative, that a 10% increase, increase in the number of units is insubstantial. However, we felt it's important for us to engage the community, and that even though we're asking for less than 10%, we actually came to the board and we said that we believe it is a substantial change, and we would like to have the board get the community involved and then open a public hearing to discuss the matter. The board obviously does not have to approve that, and, and, you know, and they're gonna, typically, the board is gonna push back on what we're doing and ask for concessions. And I don't know if I'm doing the chairman's speech now, but, but, so the board, you know, can, can ask us to change things a little bit, you know, and we would like to listen, we want to listen to the neighbors, and, you know. So basically, this is what, what's in front of the board today. Phases, expansion of Phase Five from 52 units, adding 35 units between the rental unit building and Phase Five that's being built today, eliminate three single-family houses that were fronting on LeBaron Boulevard, and then put three buildings that are mostly gonna front on FERNAB, that are gonna be a total of 36 times three.
108.
108. So, so that's the project in front of the board. So I can, I can have, my engineer, Jason Young, is gonna make the presentation as far as the plans and the layout of the community.
Just to give you a better idea. Jay, do you guys have copies of this, but if you want to swing over this way so you can see it, I would prefer to have it facing that way so that the audience can see what he's talking about, again, to avoid questions maybe down the road. You don't have to go. I know you want to see what's going on.
I'll sit next to you, June.
Nobody wants to sit next to me. All right, take it away.
Yeah, Jason Young, who's our impact engineer, and we've been involved with this project not in Phase One, or when it was originally permitted, we came in when Phase Two.
Can you go, please?
Yeah, I'll try. When the larger building was constructed, and we also were involved with Phases Three, the single-family homes, and then Phase Four, the duplexes that were added on Country Club Lane, as well as Phase Five, the multifamily buildings that were added recently, they're under construction still now. So what Mr. Aitani had explained is that the first part of this is the expansion of Phase Five. So in the area next to the large building that's been there for quite some time will be Phase Five, and this is three 10-unit buildings and one 5-unit building, and these have been designed in a courtyard configuration, where you will enter in and they'll have, the units will all face towards each other, they'll have their own garages, their own little driveways parking, there'll also be guest parking, overflow parking within that courtyard area. This will tie into the sewer system that already exists that will be expanded. Drainage will be below grade, all beautiful sand out there, and then a small infiltration basin located by the lock runs. So that's the Phase Five modification portion of the project. And as Mr. Aitani pointed out, Phase Six is off of, more off of FERNAB, on the southern edge of the project. This involves the construction of a three-story building and two four-story buildings with its associated parking, for all those units. And that will be accessed off FERNAB. Drainage, again, will be below grade, infiltration systems, to recharge any runoff that get and sent back into the groundwater. Again, that will also be tied into the existing sewer system that is on LeBaron.
Can you speak up on what that ties into, please? I can't hear you.
We can't hear you. It's really hard.
It's hard to hear what you're tying into for waste water and-
It all ties into the existing sewer treatment plant that's under construction.
But it does come hand over-
Hang on, hang on. Like I said, you're going to get an opportunity to come up here and say what you want.
So that was built for what's there now, and it gets expanded as more units get added up. So that's all part of the modification, is that sewer treatment plant gets expanded and a whole other treatment frame is added to it.
Okay.
Are you saying that you're gonna add-
Hey, listen, listen, excuse me. You're going to get your opportunity, the board's going to ask questions, then I am going to invite public comment, and you guys can have the line go out the door if you want. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna shut down early, we don't, there is no last call here, so. Is that the end of your, your presentation at this point, Jason?
I do believe so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add something as far as the treatment plant. The Phase Five expansion is gonna be, we would like to tie it to the treatment, the existing treatment plant. We have capacity for that. Currently, we have 66,000 gallons a day capacity in the two trains that were added newly to the, to the community. We have an 18,000 gallons per day train that was, that was mothballed, so it's sitting idle. The train is there, it can be reactivated if we need to get it reactivated. However, the buildings that are on FERNAB, we can actually put subtext systems there. Jason, correct me if I'm wrong. So we're gonna have to go in front of DEP, and we're gonna ask DEP, we're gonna say, all right, we have 200 units already occupied, and those 200 units today, we're using 14,000 gallons a day. So that leaves us with 42,000 gallons a day extra capacity. Even though the design, what they call 110 gallons per bedroom, is, that was, that was established back in the 50s, and it was never changed. That's when you used to flush a toilet, and it used to get six gallons in, and showerheads used to be five, six gallons a minute, which all of that has changed. Today, the, our community, based on the water use, as well as the treatment plant, our water use is running around 14,000 gallons a day, and that's based on the bearing that we get from the town of Tonton. And the treatment plant is processing 14,000 gallons a day, which happens to be the same amount of water. And that is month over month, sometimes when we get a lot of rain, we see that number spike up a little bit because of some infiltration into the system, but it's still below, below, you know, way below the design. Now, we have to go into DEP to say, DEP, would you allow us to tap, to tap into the existing system for those three buildings? DEP can say, no, get your own system, which is fine, which we don't have an issue with that. The benefit of tying into the, the existing system, on one hand, usually, a system that's designed for 66,000 gallons a day capacity, that's only using 14,000 gallons a day, is not running efficiently. We have an SU, which is the, the organization that manages and treats the system, they're there every day, I'm sure you guys have seen their trucks every day, they take water samples, they take measurements, make sure that the, the system is functioning as it's supposed to be and we're not contaminating the groundwater. And every month, they have to submit a report. So every day, they take measured readings on how much the system has processed, and then they, they, they put it in a chart, and every month, they have to submit a report to DEP. They, they read all kind of contaminants levels to make sure that the, the aspirant, which is the discharge coming out of the treatment plant after it's been treated, is clean enough that it's not gonna cause any, it meets certain parameters that you're allowed to put it back in the ground. That water that exits the treatment plant, it's, it's almost drinking quality, so when it goes back into the ground. And I say almost because it does have a color and, and stuff like that, that's, you know. So we have to go to DEP, we're gonna say, even though we reached the design capacity of the system, but the actual use is only a quarter of the size of the treatment plant. So they say, okay, and historically, DEP has done that, knowing that we're no longer using 110 gallons per day per bedroom, we're really using more like 40 or 50 gallons per day per bedroom. And again, it's not only what the treatment plant is processing, it's what the town of Tonton is bidding us for, so, bidding the community for. So, so, and those two match, so the numbers are, are, are the same. Again, if DEP says no, the three buildings that we have that are on the southern part of, of the community, those, we, we left enough room that we can put in a treatment or subtext for those units, so we do not need to tie. The benefit, and we, we, we would, we, we probably would like to get community support, if we tie those buildings to the treatment plant, the cost of running the treatment plant is, is fairly stable. You know, that doesn't change. So every day, we have to pay somebody to go there, take tests, do, do lab tests, report to the, to DEP, put chemicals in the system. So every time you add, you add few units, the number, the, the cost of maintaining thirty minutes is gonna drop. So it's gonna help, basically, obviously, it's gonna help us. I'm not claiming that I'm doing it to help the community, so I want to make sure that that's clear. I'm, I'm doing it to help myself. But at the same time, this is a win-win situation. This is, the community benefits from it, and we benefit from it at the same time. If DEP decided that, you know what, no, we don't want you to, to tie into, into the treatment plant, that's fine, we can have our own, so we don't have any issue doing that. And just, that's to clarify the treatment plant, because I know this is a big question, and, and, and everybody is worried about it. You have any questions, Mr. Chairman, or?
I, I'm sure the board's gonna have some questions, so, actually, you know what, why don't you, you might as well stand there because it's easier for everyone to hear you. So at this juncture, what I'm gonna do is, and just again, I'm kind of trying to keep the audience up to date, the next phase, at this point, what we'll do is the board members will ask questions and try to clarify and get some more insight. Once we're done asking questions, then I'll open it up to the community to ask questions in, in an orderly fashion, so. One quick question I have before I open it up to the rest of the board is, obviously, the FERNAB exit that you're gonna open up, what is gonna be in place to maybe, hopefully not have it become a cut through? I mean, it's a nice little shortcut from Precinct Street over to Rhode Island Road.
It is, and, and that was an earlier concern, and that's where, at one time, we said we would put a gate there to try to, and then give remote controls to the, to the homeowners or to the residents. The, the, the only, which is fine, we can still do that. I mean, it's not, it's not an issue. It is, it is, we are concerned that it's gonna be a cut through, so we can always put road, road, road bumps, we can put a sign that private property, you know, and, and no cut-through traffic. The problem with the gate is two things. If you GPS LeBaron Boulevard-
Right.
-it's gonna send you down FERNAB, and the fire department and, and ambulances had issues with that. They, they, they entered, they get a call, they put it on their GPS, it sends them through FERNAB. So, so basically, the, the system is reading that FERNAB is, is, is connected to LeBaron Boulevard. It was always intended to be connected to LeBaron, to, to LeBaron Boulevard. It is, we're not doing any, anything different. The only thing we're doing different is that there was a gate, we can still put the gate, it's gonna create issues, I've seen it with other communities. You get a truck that the GPS sent there, that they're making a delivery, an Amazon truck or, or, or a UPS truck, and then they stop, and there are five cars behind it, what do they do? They have to back out, they back up, and get all those cars behind it to back up as well, for them to exit, because they can't go through the gate, they don't have the remote control. So this is something that I, I would like to get feedback from the community. What, what, what would you prefer? We can put street bumps, we can put signs that, you know, this is not an access road, that it's a private property. Again, think about emergency vehicles, the GPS sends them that way, and hopefully, none of us would need an emergency vehicle to respond to our house, but a few seconds can make a difference. We start with the fire chief, he wants that open, because again, we've had a couple of instances where they came in this way, but they couldn't access LeBaron Boulevard, and they couldn't wait for us to actually make the connection. They actually have been, have been almost on a weekly basis, checking with us to find out how soon are we gonna open that connection. So I guess that's the access, and-
Okay. Yeah, you may or may not have an answer, but again, it's a, just a question I had. So at this point, I'm gonna open it up to my board members, and does anyone have any questions for the developer, or points of clarification? I'll ask council if they have any questions as well, so. You have some? Hang on, are you gonna-
Okay.
Does anybody else have someone on the board?
Go ahead, you go first, Chris.
How many units are affordable?
Going forward, we're gonna have 25% of the, of the units affordable.
In the past, you've asked for modifications to reduce those numbers and put them to the later phases. Are you gonna include those right up front?
Say that again?
Are you gonna include the affordable units right up front in the initial construction of Phase, of this 108 units?
Usually, they get mixed in, so every time we build three, you know, I mean, some buildings, like the 36-unit buildings, you have to build the whole building, and then, you know, and then you start scheduling closings, you know, but typically, they're all mixed in at the same time, and they happen at the same time.
You mentioned the fire department. Have you, we received fire department impact statements, police department, DPW, have they all given us impact statements towards this?
They, I'm not sure if they have.
I'm gonna jump in real quick. The only thing we have at this point, which I was gonna read in, but I can do it now to the record after our questions, was a memo from the fire department. Memorandum has been written to provide comment on the proposed modification of the comprehensive permit for LeBaron Boulevard project. Fire department offers no opinion on the overall request. The buildings described in the proposal will require a comprehensive plan review process that is intended to facilitate code compliance and life safety. Should the request be approved, the Lakeville Fire Department would urge the ZBA to require that FERNAB be reasonably improved to meet the fire code requirements of a fire department access road. Fire department is prepared to coordinate with the applicant to enable code compliance. That was from Mike P. O'Brien, the fire chief, dated August 1st. So they don't have any real opinion other than you need to make sure you're up to code when you're building the buildings, which they need to review anyways and go through that process, and to make sure FERNAB is reasonably accessible, or proved to be reasonably accessible.
So I guess we'd need some hard numbers from him on the road with SWAP analysis, hydrant locations. um, hydrant locations, uh, those would be my concerns, that we would want to include those in the, uh, in the, uh, specification going forward. Uh, you mentioned the wastewater system, what about the water supply? Water's tight, where are you getting that? You have that for the units and for the sprinkler systems?
The, the, uh, the community was approved, uh, to use up to seventy thousand gallons a day. So, so, uh, Lakeville has certain allocation from the, from Taunton, and we use Taunton water. Uh, and, and the community was approved for seventy thousand gallons a day, and we're only using on average fourteen thousand gallons a day during winter, winter months. In the summer, that spikes up a little bit because some people use their irrigation systems, uh, you know, but we're still way under our seventy thousand, and we believe even with the full build-out, we would still fall up, fall, fall under the seventy thousand gallons per day that was allocated to that community.
So you're stating that you have enough for portable water and the sprinkler systems for both times?
That's correct.
Thank you. Um, stormwater, that you, like, I heard Mr. Young Chris-
Stormwater, uh, we have to abide by regulations, we have to meet all these state, yeah, state regulations and, and, you know, clean water, under the clean water act and-
So that's been considered, you have a catchphrase?
Oh, we have, yes, absolutely.
All right, does Jason, Jason, you wanna?
We did, uh, preliminary analysis of drainage, run of calculations to make sure everything we can, uh, accommodate any stormwater runoff that we have. And as the plans get finalized, we'll be creating the full drainage report, um, for all the drainage systems.
But you don't have that for, uh, for the permit, uh, permitting now, so we just have to include that, future design?
Yep.
Um, but nothing preliminary, no drawings?
Oh, there's drawings on the drainage systems, there's infiltration basins, there's catch basins, there's water quality tanks, all that's drawn up, there's-
All right, so I guess we could word the, the comprehensive permit to include MS4 approval?
Yeah, that's what we've done in the past to have final plans.
Sounds good, thank you. Um, four-story units, they gonna have elevators in them?
Yes.
All right. Um, and then rooftop screening for the, uh, RTUs, you gonna have screening on those for the residential neighborhoods?
I have no idea what that is, I'm just like, what is it?
Rooftop units, you gonna have ACs on the rooftop?
You're gonna have-
We haven't even come that far yet, I have no idea.
Then I would put that into the, um, to the-
To put them on the roof rather than-
The screening around, if you're gonna have them on the roof, then have screening on them so that the noise doesn't bother the neighbors.
Your concern, your concern is if any mechanicals go up on the, correct me if I'm wrong, any mechanicals go up on the roof, some screening to-
I don't think they do though.
-to make sure that noise gets off and it's-
Okay, they're not on the unit, they're not, they wouldn't be required.
Yeah, they'll probably be on the ground.
If they're on the side of the building, then you probably would wanna put the, the screen on the-
But we really haven't come that far yet, I'm-
Okay, yeah, then maybe we should get some more finished-
That's good to know, that, that, yeah.
-drawings before we move forward, that's all, those are my concerns. Um, I'm good, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Jerry, can we?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. How many of the current units are affordable?
Twenty-five percent.
So of the, you said two-hundred-and-eighteen units are currently constructed, is that right? Did I capture that?
The, the, the two-hundred-seventy, two-hundred-seventy-nine have been approved in all phases.
Okay.
Out of that, two-seventy-nine, twenty-five percent are affordable.
Okay.
How can that be?
Go ahead.
Because phase three was changed to one-hundred percent market.
Yeah, so in phase one, there are six affordable units. In phase two, there are fifty-six affordable units. In phase five, there are eight affordable units.
Wait, I'm sorry, go back, phase one was six, phase two was how many?
Uh, fifty-six.
Okay, and then phase three is zero.
Phase three is zero, phase four is zero, and phase five is eight. So if you, I, I don't have, uh, uh, can you add them up please, or?
Seventy?
Seventy?
Seventy.
So, so out of the two-seventy-nine, seventy are affordable. So if you do set two-seventy-nine divided by four?
Yep, sixty-nine point seven.
Sixty-nine, so we're actually over?
No, no, next round.
You sure?
We round out.
Uh, yeah, sure.
So sixty-nine point seven is, yeah, exactly.
So that's why anything going forward is gonna be twenty-five percent affordable. So each phase will maintain the twenty-five percent?
Going forward, that's correct.
So for four-nineteen, he needs a hundred and five total, so he's got a-
So we'll add seventy now, so we need to add thirty-five more affordable units.
The point, Jerry, is, what, obviously, is each phase goes, you're gonna make sure it's twenty-five percent, not twenty, not less than twenty-five percent in this building and fifty percent in that, it's twenty-five as each one is-
Typically, typically, even mass housing gets involved in the distribution of the units around the buildings.
Oh, no, I know, yeah, they want that, I think, I just wanna clarify your question to make sure that-
Usually, we propose something for the board, uh, and then mass housing gets involved in it as well, so it's not only the board, mass housing, at the same time, they, they look at the distribution.
Yeah, if we do something that they don't like, they're gonna overturn the settlement.
I mean, if they see us clustering them all in one side, they, 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 they want us to spread it out.
Right, the point is so that nobody, so that you can't, so it doesn't turn into, all right, all the affordables are in this building and everybody else isn't in the affordable, there's the benefit, one of the benefits is of the forty B, um, for the community at large or the lower, the, the affordable units is they get mixed in, no one knows what an affordable, and Barry knows what it is.
Mr. Chairman, if, if you don't mind, I would like to clarify, what does an affordable unit mean?
Let me do, let me stop you right there for a second, 'cause I was gonna actually ask town council to confirm that, so that way it's coming from town council, because I think there is a, unfortunately, I think folks think affordable is different than what it is. Affordable isn't necessarily low income, which I think a lot of people, not just in this room tonight, but a lot of people in general think that affordable is, is low income, so, Amy, if you don't mind, uh-
So, under the statute and the regulations, an affordable unit is anything that is less than eighty percent AMI. AMI is the area median income. So, um, affordable is not, um, it's, it's not subsidized or anything like that, it's not, um, you know, like section eight housing or anything like that. An affordable unit can be sixty percent AMI or fifty percent AMI, and then they have to, they have to, they can provide less affordable units, but that's not the case here. They're looking for eighty percent AMI, so they are providing, they have to provide twenty-five percent, um, of the affordables. And, um, Kathy has provided us with a document, so, uh, for the area, for the AMI, you guys are in the Brockton, um, HUD Metro FMR area, and, um, the eighty-nine percent, um, the eighty percent income for our family of four is eighty-nine thousand dollars.
So basically, those affordable units are, are designed for families making nine, ninety thousand dollars, it's called, it's eighty-nine and change. So basically, what they're doing is they're saying, listen, the average family income in our zone is a hundred and eleven, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year, they're just making it more affordable for people who are a little below that. It's, it's not, we're gonna have section eight or low income or people making thirty thousand dollars a year, not that there's anything wrong with that, but I just wanna clarify, 'cause I think unfortunately, some people think that we're gonna have extremely low-income people go into affordable units. And keep in mind, Mr. Twenty-five percent of what's there now is affordable, so.
Mr. Chairman, just clarify, that's for a family of four?
Correct.
Can I add, can I add just, just a little bit of clarification?
Sure, go ahead, you can expand on it.
So, so what, what the chairman and what, what Amy said is, is true, is, is, so those units will be offered to people that make around seventy-two thousand, right, is that the correct, for a single fam, single person?
Single person, sixty-two, five-
Sixty-two thousand, so as, as a single person buys one of those units, their income has to be at least sixty-two thousand, and then for every additional member, their income can, can go up to ninety thousand for a four, uh, uh, household, uh, uh, you know, unit. Those people have to have good credit, have to have a job, good job, and they have to have, just like all of us have to qualify when we're getting a mortgage. Those units are selling for two-hundred-sixty, two-hundred-sixty thousand dollars? So those units are selling for two-hundred-sixty thousand dollars, so whoever is gonna qualify to buy them has to qualify at that price.
One bedroom?
Uh, the one bedrooms, the number goes less, for a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom, that's, they're, they're, but for the one bedroom, the number drops, it doesn't drop by much, it drops a little bit, it gets modified. Um, so, so again, it's very important, most people would think, okay, affordable housing, that's section eight, again, there's nothing wrong with section eight, we all, sometimes in our life, we can need somehow, and, and the state is there to help us, there's nothing wrong with that. But somehow, home, people always are worried about, you know, what is affordable? Affordable is really labor force housing, it's the school teacher, it's the, the, the chief, the fire department, the police, I mean, we have, we have new graduates, uh, come into those units, we have assistant district attorneys, we've had firefighters, we have police officers, and those are the people that come in, at least when they're entry level, you know, firefighters or police officers or DPW workers and stuff like that. So those are our middle, our middle-income housing, uh, uh, neighbors, that, that will, will allow them to live in the town that they work in. So it, it's rather than, than having people move too far from their place of residence at work, it allows them a place within the community they work.
Thank you. Jerry, have another, any more questions?
I do, yeah. Have you done any traffic impact studies?
We will, we have not, but we will. Usually, the, the board, uh, would request one and then we will authorize one.
Okay. And, keep going.
Well, let, I'm sorry, let me, a traffic study was done when the three eighty-six units were proposed.
Two thousand and four.
That's correct, but that doesn't change much, I mean, really, uh, seven people-
All right, again, you guys are gonna get shot, I know it's, it's a long one, but-
The town has a new study because they're looking at widening Route seventy-nine.
Right.
So probably there's an existing study that we can look at from the town, or, but we'd be more than happy to, to have, you know, the, 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 uh, traffic engineer that did the original study to update it to reflect what we're asking the board for.
Okay, fine, I mean, in particular, with the traffic, if you're expanding Fernav, right, what's the traffic going out there?
That's correct.
Precinct, et cetera, right? I'm sure there's neighbors in that area.
Yeah.
Uh, so, go ahead.
They look at, not only immediately around the community, they actually look down the road where the traffic lights are and how the traffic is gonna go within the community, and how it's gonna disperse in the morning and how it's gonna come in, in the afternoon.
Okay. Last question, um, what's the timeline for the phases? So you have plans through phase six, what is that timeline for this traffic?
I mean, it, it's usually market dependent.
Sure.
Uh, we, we, I mean, phase five, the expansion of phase five, adding townhouse, townhouse units, uh, you know, the thirty-five units that we're expanding phase five, those are gonna be townhouse units, we'll probably build, build one building at a time or two building, two buildings at a time. Phase six, probably we will start with one building, look at market conditions, and then as we sell fifty percent of one building, we will start building the other building. So it's really market dependent.
Okay. That's all I have.
I'd love to expand on that, if I can.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, um, the traffic studies that you mentioned were done, uh, the original permit in two thousand and six, that area has grown exponentially, I think we should have a current traffic study done.
No problem.
And I'd really like to see some specifications from fire department and DPW on the road width on Fernav and the extension. It's nice to say that you're gonna work on it, but I think we need to see something more definitive drawn up.
Absolutely.
Um, have you done a night sky or a lighting study as well?
We, 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 we have not, but, but it's nowadays, probably ninety percent of the lights that you get outside are, are dark-skylights, so we're, you know, it's more and more, actually the community just replaced all their lights with dark, dark-skylighting, and the lights that we're using have a cap on top, so it kinda reduces the amount of light that goes up, you know, but it's becoming, it's gonna be like, you know, eventually, there's not gonna exist any outdoor lights unless they're, they're dark-skylight.
Thank you.
Mark, yes? Mohammed, uh, one part of the plan you guys didn't discuss was the architectural, do you have the drawings, and can you just give a brief overview of the breakdown of the units in each of the buildings? And clarify one point that Amy just noticed is that one of the buildings is, that it's a twenty-four unit on the drawings, but-
Says twenty-seven, it needs seven, thirty-six, this is twenty-seven and three stories, these are thirty-six and four and thirty-six and four.
Is that not updated?
It's in state, so we'll, we'll have to correct it, because our narrative for the application said, said the same thing, said for-
Yeah, I know, that's why, I was, that's why I'm wondering.
Yeah, no, it's in state.
Repeat that, please.
They're just, they're just clarifying, um, the plans to make sure they're accurate, they're not talking about any designer.
I've got a question, I think they're answering, I want to hear what they said.
Hang on to it, write it down, and you can ask it when you come up here and we'll take care of it.
Trying to save some time, but-
All right. Okay, so, are we, can talk about that?
Um, this is the, those are the units that we are proposing for the expansion of phase five. So phase five currently have four buildings that are straight in the center and they're like U-shaped on the end. So what we did, we took those same buildings and we eliminated the U-part. That would reduce the volume of the buildings and, and that, that, they're now just a straight building, as if you're looking at the, the middle of the building, you're not look, looking at the U-part of the buildings that are existing. So if you look at the buildings that are existing today, you would basically see, uh, see this, or this actually, and then you have the U here and then another one over there. So we took the middle of the building and we expanded, so those buildings are newer, they don't have the U shape there, and all of those are gonna be either townhouses, two-thousand square townhouses, and/or, uh, the two townhouses combined to, to become two units, one on the front and one at the top to accommodate people that want a single, that single that on the end. Uh, so, so all of those units on average are gonna be two-thousand square feet, similar to, to, to the ones that we have up there in the middle of the building. So that's phase, the expansion of phase five. Phase, um, what we're proposing for phase six is, um, three buildings, um, that, this is the three, the four sides of the building, uh, you know, uh, so this is the, this is the front. Uh, you know, and you can see the side of the building, and the front of the building, and the front and the back are fairly similar to each other, so the front and the back, they look almost exactly the same. So that's probably why you don't see any difference, or it doesn't look like there's much difference. Uh, we, 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 we had the architect, um, change colors to try to soften the look of the building, so, so, um, but colors are, are things, you know, that, that, this is, uh, you know, a, a nice proposal from the architect, and what we did, we decided to remake the roof to try to reduce the height of those buildings and go with a statue, so it was intentional, uh, to, to do that. Uh, you know, it gives it a little bit more, um, modern, a little bit more modern, uh, look, uh, so that's what we're proposing for the buildings, and I'm sorry, I'm turning my back to you, but-
No, that's all right, it's better for them to, to hear, so.
Okay.
Chris, you have a question? Yeah, how would you characterize the look and feel of the proposed three buildings in phase six compared to the, the neighborhood that's kind of there now? I mean, I went there today and took some pictures and it kind, seems to be a little bit in contrast, the kind of look and feel, I'm just wondering what your opinion was.
The, the, if, if you look at the original design, the, the, the higher buildings were in the middle of the community, so we moved them to the side, basically, and in the middle of the community, we did two, two-level multifamilies, as opposed to the larger buildings. And again, to, to, we don't have enough land to fit the hundred and seven, this is why we, we tore down the house on Fernav and we're proposing to put those buildings there. And we took out three other single-family house lots to accommodate those buildings.
Do you have any more?
Uh, Mark, did you have any additional questions or?
Uh, just Mohammed, could you just give the breakdown of the unit sizes in, in these buildings? You know, how many one-bedroom, two-bedroom?
So what we're proposing, um, it, it, the buildings are gonna be identical, they're gonna have an elevator, what, what the question was asked before, we're proposing twelve one-bedrooms, six one-bedrooms, and six one-bedrooms and dens, so they would have a study of, of, you know, for one of the bedrooms, you can see the design, uh, I'm not sure if those are online, are those online?
I don't know whether, have we put them up yet?
I didn't put that one up.
But eventually, they will be online.
They will be, they will be on, on- It will be on the, I mean, the permit.
So they will be online, we can look at them and then...
Oh, they are, okay.
Who would like to, we can email them to. So if you want to, we can, we can give a chart, we can, we're not happy to email you the plan and the additions or whatever. So what we're proposing is six one-bedrooms, one bathroom, six one-bedroom, one bathroom, plus a den, and twenty-two bedroom, two bathroom units, and four three-bedroom, two bathroom units. Now, mass housing requires that we have ten percent of the units three bedrooms, so that's why we have to, so that's part of the requirements, that we have to have, ten percent of the units have to be ten bedrooms, have to be three bedrooms. So that's why we have them there. Again, so each building has four three bedrooms, one of those four is gonna be affordable, and so on and so forth. So, so the twenty-two bedrooms, you're gonna have five, five that are gonna be affordable, and the twelve that are one-bedroom are gonna have three affordable. And then they will be scattered around the building and the floors.
You'll have accessible units in there as well?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Jerry?
So, when you were opening a statement about increasing the number of units because you're allowed ten percent buffer from mass housing, right?
No, I'm, I'm, mass housing...
Just explain again the three eighty-six to the four...
Yeah, we're asking for thirty-three more units. The idea is we added five and a half acres to the site. And so we're asking the board to give us this nine percent more. Now, mass housing, in their question and answer, they say, is ten percent increase of ten percent of the units, is that substantial or insubstantial?
Right.
And mass housing calls it insubstantial. However, we chose to make it substantial because we wanted to hear from the neighbors, we wanted to, you know, to get everybody involved. We didn't wanna go in front of the board, say, this is what we want, mass housing says this is insubstantial, and let's run with it. We wanted to have this meeting, we wanted to have the involvement of the neighbors, and we wanted the neighbors to know what's going on.
Hang on. Amy, could counsel...
Mr. Chairman, just to let everyone know, when you change the style of the building, it is substantial automatically. This would have been a substantial change, no matter what.
Other questions from the board? Counsel, did you have some questions?
Oh, I did, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of them were answered, or asked by members and answered. I definitely recommend that the Fire Department take a look at both Phases for turning radii for the fire, for the largest fire truck. And I, I think I missed it, are both Phases going to be on the wastewater treatment plant?
No.
Only, which one?
Phase, the expansion of Phase Five will be.
Okay.
Because we have the extra design capacity.
All right, and so Phase Six is gonna be on septic?
We're gonna ask DEP to allow us to tie into the existing treatment plant, and if they say no, we will have private septic, yes.
Okay. And then, I think that they, we also, you would also need to run the speed bumps by the Fire Department and DPW, they usually don't like those.
Yeah, we said we're looking for recommendations, basically, and would be more than happy to do with whatever the board decides.
So we do need, we would need a revised plan because this plan is wrong for Phase Six? And are these all, are these all for sale units or any of them rental?
For sale units.
None of them are rental?
None of them are rental.
That was it for now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do we have any more questions at this point? Obviously, we can come back and take questions from the board if we need to. All right. You got one?
Just a thought, since the septic or the wastewater treatment is gonna be such a big part of this and concerns, are you prepared to do whatever it takes and do that phase of the construction first to alleviate a lot of the problems?
The current treatment plant that we have today is only running fourteen thousand gallons a day, and it's designed for sixty-six thousand gallons a day. We're not even using twenty-five percent capacity. So, the, the, so we can add to the system all of those and we would still be probably at fifty percent. Now, we do have a separate train that's already in the ground for eighteen thousand gallons a day, which we can activate that if we need to. I don't think we need to do that, I think we're gonna keep it mothballed until if we see that, usually DEP would like to see no more than eighty percent of capacity. So at sixty-six thousand gallons a day, they would like us to be at fifty, fifty-four thousand before they want us to open another venue or expand the treatment. But most likely, with everything, with full build-out, including Phases Five and Six and Expansion, we will not reach capacity. Again, this is only based on the history of what's happening today.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good. Awesome. Okay, this is what everybody else has been waiting for. So I'm gonna open it up for public comment now. Rich, one of our select board members, do you have a question? I'll give you the details.
First, the camera, what's left? As far as Fern Avenue is concerned, if Fern Avenue does get used, no matter what, then we should bring that road up to town standards, including drainage, so whatever requirements are for there. The other thing to take into consideration is the water line that is currently in the existing development, okay? That water line should be extended down Fern Avenue to tie it in so we have a loop, you know, with Tonton Water, so it's not that far away, and that would eliminate some problems, you know, as well as far as the system is concerned. The other thing that I would like to see is that, I'd like to see some fifty-five and older units. So whether it's one building or a combination of buildings, we are in desperate need of fifty-five and older units for the seniors here in town, so I would like to propose that as an option as well.
Thank you. Did you mind responding to that? Is that something that you guys would be amenable to, or a portion of them at least?
Yeah, so improving Fern Ave, most likely we're gonna ask Tonton Water to allow us to tie into Fern Ave. Now, the whole community is, has one meter, or, I mean, has three meters because in case of a fire, another meter will kick in. So they will have to add another meter on Fern Ave, and then they can connect, that will include, improve water quality definitely. Tonton Water, we have to go in front of Tonton Water, and if they say yes, we don't have any issues with that. As far as, as making, providing some age-restricted units, I mean, it all depends on the final approval, right? I mean, if you tell me, no, we're only gonna allow you two buildings, I would rather not. I'd rather not improve Fern Ave, and I'd rather not do fifty-five and old and age-restricted because that's an additional cost that we're gonna have to incur. But if we're doing all three buildings, I would think it's, it's, we'll be, we will be willing to do, you know, I guess what Selectman Richard said, we will, we will look at the final approval so the board can condition the approval on us doing those two things. So we have to look at the full picture. I can't say yes, and then suddenly the project trades by one building or something, so I will be, I would look at some...
So let me make it easy on you, you're open to it as far as depending on...
I'm not opposed to it.
You're not opposed to it?
I'm not opposed to it.
Great, thank you. Okay, anyone else have any comments? All right, I know probably you prefer not to, but come on up.
I'm just curious.
Up to the podium, because that way the speaker there can get picked up by Lake Cam, and even though we know who you are, because you were here earlier, name and address.
I just have one question. I'm from Lakeville, Mass. Just how much of a percentage going to the residents of affordable, if any, to the residents of Lakeville?
Ask it again.
How much percentage are gonna be allowed to, for the town residents?
Oh, you mean, is it gonna be specified for...
It's gonna be open to everybody or just town residents?
I don't think...
Local preference.
Yeah, local preference.
The state won't, the Commonwealth won't allow us to do.
Actually, do you mind letting everyone know that?
Sure, so the Commonwealth doesn't allow local preference. We can, we can try and do local preference with the monitoring agent, but most often the Commonwealth says no, the subsidizing agency doesn't allow it.
But can I add, the way the process works is that, once we actually have a couple of education sessions in town hall, we have to hire an independent third party, and they come in, they do like an education session for potential interested buyers, and then they do a lottery, and then they choose whoever comes out in the lottery, that they can take first position, second position, third position, and so on and so forth, that's how the process works. Typically, typically, we end up with more than half that are local, either employed in the local community or lived in the local community. You know, so usually, and this is obviously, it changes, but depending on the number of applicants, the people in the town and the immediate towns hear about it more than people that are on the wider, in the wider radius. So, so most of the applicants are within five miles, if you wanna call it.
Come on up, sir.
Chad Smith, Eight Bunker Lane. I've got a few things here, so I'll just start with this. In terms of the unit numbers, if they're subtracting three from the three eighty-six and then adding a hundred and eight units in three thirty-six buildings plus the thirty-five, doesn't that bring us to a total of five hundred and twenty-six units?
I'm gonna ask someone who's better math off than I am, but, okay, go ahead.
So, all the approvals that we have today are two hundred and seventy-nine, so we still have a hundred and seven units that we have not built yet, or we have not come in front of the board to get them to approve that phase. So Phase, Phase One is sixty-two, Phase Two is fifty-six, Phase Three will become seventy-four, Phase Four is still two, Phase Five is fifty-two. Those units add to two seventy-nine, and the approval is three eighty-six. So we still have a hundred and seven units by the way, we're only asking for an additional thirty-three.
Your number's down to three hundred and sixty-eight, right?
Yeah, three hundred and eighty-seven.
That's to build that many.
Okay.
That's one year old.
All right, and then the three buildings, is, can they ever be changed from sale to rental properties? Like during the process, could they decide, we, well, the market's doing this, so now we're just gonna rent the building instead of selling those condos?
That would be a substantial change.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if they were to do that, they'd have to come be back before us because that would be considered substantial and we would have to approve it. They just can't do it on their own.
All right. In terms of the wastewater treatment plant, at a previous HOA meeting, we were told the four Ps should only go down, poop, pee, puke, and paper. So with that, they originally, when buying the house, they allowed us to put in garbage disposals, which is going to send way more stuff than the four Ps down to the wastewater treatment. There's, some neighbors have mentioned that they've been told that it's bad for us to have garbage disposals.
Yeah.
So is that something that they're gonna allow in the new buildings, which is gonna increase the amount of stuff feeding into the wastewater treatment plant?
How much?
I can answer that. The original engineer, the design engineer for the treatment plant, said actually he encouraged garbage disposals. The new engineer, beta engineer, the people that designed the original plant, they said, oh, absolutely, you know, he encouraged it because that helps in digesting of bacteria or whatever it is. The new engineer that we have, NSU, the manager of the treatment plant, they said they prefer that we don't add garbage disposals, so the buildings will not, unless the engineer who's managing the treatment plant, or the two engineers agree, which way, so for now, we used to offer garbage disposals, and then we stopped offering it.
DEP doesn't allow it.
Not for a treatment plant, for a septic.
They don't want some of the treatment plant, do they?
So the new engineer, NSU, the one that's managing the site, they said they prefer not to see garbage disposals, so we stopped offering it.
Okay, so you're not gonna put them in, in council?
We're not gonna put it in unless...
You're not gonna put it in?
Unless we get, unless we get a clear answer from our engineers or from the engineer.
Okay, and council has just referenced that DEP...
In the past three projects that I've done, they have not allowed individual wastewater treatment plants pursuant to the regulations, they don't allow garbage.
Okay, so between developers' comment and council, I don't think you need to worry about the garbage disposals and the new stuff going in.
So in terms of Fern Ave, you're talking about speed bumps and things like that, I'm a firefighter, and I can tell you driving ambulances, fire trucks, or speed bumps is a giant pain, I would highly recommend against that. And also, speed bumps aren't gonna cut, stop people, and signage is not gonna stop people from cutting through the neighborhood, it doesn't work.
Can I, I'm gonna cut, I'm gonna stop you just for a second there because I'm guessing you're not the only one who has that thought, I brought it up initially. You had referenced that you, there is an HOA currently in place...
Yeah.
...for the existing folks in there. The developer has already said he's willing to work to do whatever to stop that to be a cut through. What I would suggest, because I can assure everyone here, this is not gonna get resolved tonight, we're not, we're not gonna approve, disapprove anything here, I would suggest the HOA reach out to Mohammed or his representatives and see if you can come up with some type of agreement that it honestly sounds like he'll do whatever you guys think is best to stop the cut through, and I've heard three times now.
It is an association for each day, so each day has its own association, and we would love to hear comments from those associations.
So whatever suggestions folks have, please get them to the developer and we can readdress them here. We don't, my point is, I don't, everyone doesn't need to come up and say they, whether they like speed bumps or don't like speed bumps, we know it's an issue and it needs to be resolved, so. Do you have any recommendations?
I'd probably go with a gate, and before the gate, I'd have a sensor, and then with a turnaround area, so if you can't get through the gate, you just loop right around and you head on out. That's how I would approach it, make the road wide, somewhat of an island in the middle, sensor, opens the gate from the car window, they have that, and if you can't get through, you just loop on out and you go up the other way. So that's a possibility.
Okay, next question.
Um, looking at Phase Five, the way it's U-shaped, again, going to my firefighting, it's gonna be tough to get apparatus inside there, depending on the width of that, it looked tight on the plans. So, again, driving the tower truck engines, it's gonna be tough to get them in there.
Usually the engineer will do a simulation for the largest truck that the town has.
We did.
You did already? So they do a simulation, there are software programs, they put this in place, and then they simulate how a truck movement would go around the building, and it's the responsibility of the design engineer to do that.
All right, as somebody who does it in actuality, I would definitely make it wider than what the engineer says.
We're gonna make sure the Fire Department reviews it anyway, so.
We have to meet national transportation standards.
And then he mentioned, Mohammed mentioned at one point that during the summer, water increases in the neighborhood were rated for seventy thousand gallons.
That's right.
What does that number reach in the summer at peak times? When everybody's using their sprinkler system, everybody's home shower and all that.
This summer, nobody was allowed to use a sprinkler system, and all that, ah, they should stop because within a drought and pump already have. So, luckily we have people that are using the irrigation systems, they have a separate meter because this way they don't have to pay for the sewer at the same time, so when the bills come out, they're gonna be the offenders that did not listen to the rules and regulations, so.
Do you know what the average, what it does go up to in the summertime?
At the last six months, we haven't looked forward yet, so we would be more happy to report the forward numbers.
All right, so we can get those numbers for the next...
And then, and then the association, we have the right to ask people to no longer use the irrigation system.
And then, two...
Again, seven, sorry, it's seventy thousand average a year.
Right.
So even if the summer takes five to seventy thousand, but in the winter it's thirty thousand, your average is...
Your average, okay.
And then, if there could be a comprehensive study for the wastewater treatment plant based on the amount of new units that are going in to see how much water, right now we're using about fourteen thousand, you said? If we add all, if you add all these units, what's that new number gonna be? If there could be a comprehensive study for that, because, again, we've had issues with it already.
Absolutely. DEP would... Absolutely, uh, D E P will look at that.
Okay.
Okay, D E P review it.
And then last, um, water meters, I'm sure everybody in here knows our water in that neighborhood is extremely expensive, uh, coming from Totten, because we use one meter and we get charged at their highest rate, so, instead of adding another meter and keeping it how it is, is there any way that you can work with the HOA board, because I know that's something that they were talking about, changing it over to single-family home water meters to lessen the expense of our water?
I'm aware that the homeowners association is working on it, we're supporting them. We, we attempted before to talk to Fountain Water, it didn't take us anywhere, but I think phase three is actively pursuing it, and that it looks like having more success than people. When it comes from a developer, especially in that one, it comes from homeowners, so, so fa- phase three homeowners association, David, smiling over there, maybe he has.
More, more honor that they join me.
Okay, all right, I didn't know with this, the, the new phases would affect what we're trying to accomplish.
That's fine, are you good?
I'm good, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
A question related to that for council?
Go ahead.
Amy, can we ask for peer review on water and, um, so we, yeah, all right.
We should do a civil engineering peer review, which would cover, um, it would cover water, stormwater, um, it would cover, um, it would even look at the turning radio, things like that.
That'd be great, I'd like, I'd love to make that part of the.
I have talked with our consulting engineers about that, but, um, they felt they needed some additional information, rather than spend time reviewing these very formulary drawings that, uh, we should get through tonight, find out what the issues are, then have Mohammed provide the additional information, and, and then we will forward it to the engineers.
Yeah, I mean, this is, to some degree, this is an information gathering.
Yes, exactly.
So, we're gonna gather all sorts of questions, we have questions, council's gonna point stuff out to us, town planter's gonna point stuff out, we're gonna gather those together, we'll ask Mohammed for all this information, and then we can take the next step from there, whether it's peer review, whether it's having certain departments in town look at things and stuff of that nature, again, I, I'm not to be repetitive, but we're not gonna get to the end of this tonight, this is more information gathering than anything.
What you're saying is, this is.
Sir, you're naming your address.
24 LeBaron. You're saying that the modification, it's a done deal, we can't do anything about it. And at the beginning, you said you ran out, it was 386, when it was first added, now when he changes it to 419, why wouldn't that, how can that be the same modification? That's a complete change, you're adding 33 units to the place.
Right, in, in.
Well, where's it saying that we can add? But what about, what about eight and nine, what's gonna happen with those two? He's talking about number seven, there's two more eights and nines, is he gonna build something more down this, down the road? You know, you keep saying modification, it's nothing we can do, doesn't make any sense that, you know, because he's going on and on and on, you know, I don't know where he's gonna stop, that's one of my questions. You know, Peabody Properties was the original people that took the first permit to build these places, and he given after Peabody Properties died, so why would that modification still be good, if it was on Peabody Properties, it took it out?
No, I mean, he's, he's requesting a modification, and that's the whole purpose of these hearings, is to review the modification, it's not automatic, this is, the whole purpose of these hearings is to review the drawings, review the plans, have them adjusted, requesting additional information, that's what the purpose of this is.
But what's the next step after this? It's, you guys say you're gonna do this, you're gonna do that, and then it's taken, okay, it's all set to go. Who's, who's gets the final say whether it's gonna go or not go?
Uh, this board has the final say, this is.
But you said really, it's already been approved.
No, to.
No, but we, we approved the original permit.
That was the original.
If the petitioner wants to change it, he can come back, or she can come back, the entity can come back and ask.
The original permit was for 389, so if you're changing a modification, you're increasing it, I'm saying, that's phase seven, but he could come back two years from now and add another 40 for phase eight, another 50 for phase nine, and you people say there's nothing we can do about, he's gonna add and add and add.
He could continue to come back and ask, and at some point, if it's, um, and I don't, I wanna be careful, and I'll probably have council, uh, answer for me in a second, but at some point, there's a difference between saying we're gonna add 30 something units to a 386 unit project, and saying I'm gonna come back and increase it by, if you add 40 and 50 to, you know, eight and nine, and say I'm gonna increase it by 130, that's even beyond a substantial change, at some point, yes, we do have the authority to say, no, that's completely, you can't do that, you're gonna have to stop from scratch and go for a new permit type of, is that kinda in layman's terms?
Yes, I, I.
That's an intentional thing that he said.
Sir, let, sir, let, let her answer the question, because she could probably clarify a lot better than I can.
So, um, so the original permit from 2004 was for four phases, for 386, um, he is, he is expanding that by adding a phase five, and if, well, he already, he already got permission for a phase five back, I think it was 2012, but, um, he's expanding that and adding a phase six, now, he's really only adding 33, I think it was, 33 units.
Yep.
Um, and they are, they are within the development.
No, they're not, he's adding land.
He's.
Excuse ma'am.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
He's not adding land, um, across the street, he's not adding land four miles away, it's within the area of the development.
And five will move in.
So, the Commonwealth considers that, you know, within the development, that would be the expansion of the 2004 permit, however, it's important to note that this board has determined that this is a substantial modification, which means that you're looking at this anew.
Right.
So, you're looking at phase five and phase, phase six anew, so that means that you have 180 days to review this project, you can go out to peer review for as much peer review as you want, you can do architectural, you can do civil, you can do, um, traffic, um, you have, once 180 days is over, you have 40 days to issue a decision, um, so, this is, this is, you are looking at this anew, technically, so, there's really not much of a difference, even if he did file for a new permit, there, there's really not much of a difference, what he's trying to do, I think, is even out the, the 25% affordables, because back in 2016, phase three was modified to have no affordables, so he's adding these units and he's keeping it all together to be able to, to be able to meet the 25% affordables.
Correct, but let me ask you this, even with, to your point, it's, it's, it's a change, um, and it's, we look at it the same way, the modification is new or not, but we're still held to the same level that we would be if he turned around and said, I don't, you know, that the board just said no to the modification, he still has the ability to go to the state, and the state can say.
Right, which he would, which he would on a new permit, too.
Guess what?
Yeah.
You guys, you can't just say no because you wanna say no, because people don't want it for whatever reason, it has to be, it's, it's a pretty high threshold we have to.
Yes, and it's the same under a new application.
Yeah.
It's even probably different.
So, you're saying phase six ends, ends the application, so it's no seven, eight, nine?
I don't see that in front of us.
Sir, at, at this point, yes, that doesn't prohibit him from coming back and asking to add it again, it doesn't prohibit him from saying, I'm gonna start something brand new, a completely new permit, we can't tell, the, keep in mind, as council pointed out, and I think, you know, as our town planter pointed out, we're at 6.5% of the 10% we're supposed to have for affordable, and that's before the 2020 census numbers comes in, not just the folks in here, this town has grown a lot in the past five years, 10 years, when those new numbers come in, all that's gonna do is shrink the percentage, so, if we had 100 people living in town, and we had 15 affordable units, and then we found out, whoops, we actually have 200, it's not 15% anymore, it just dropped to 7.5%, I mean, I'm using different numbers, but that's what's gonna happen, so.
That's, the next question was, what's this gonna add to the schools? This is not 55 and over, this is any age, so what's, what are these, next, all these units, it's a 36.
First of all, we can't answer that question, because we don't know who's gonna move in, and secondly, and council, I think, can confirm this for me, we cannot take that into consideration whatsoever, we cannot turn around and say we wanna make sure families don't move in there, children don't move in there, um, I'm pretty sure we can get in pretty hot water if we do that.
Yes, you cannot, under numerous statutes and, and federal statutes, we cannot take into consideration how many children will move in, um, the most we could do, uh, the most they've allowed us to do is designate where bus stops would be, that's about it, that's all the Commonwealth will allow us to regulate when it comes to school-aged children.
Yeah, believe me, sir, I'm not trying to pass the buck here, but unfortunately, it's, it, it flows downhill sometimes.
Now, is anybody watching how he's building these things and when he finishes? He built 18 units on Eagle Way, and he destroyed the road going up there, and he did not finish it after he got done, he said that wasn't in his contract, same with LeBaron Boulevard, that went all the way from all the units, is he gonna retire that when he finishes, or is it just gonna be, uh, uh, different boards have to pay for that?
Well, that'll be part of the review process, and conditions that will attach to the permit will be, will evaluate the existing conditions of what's there, will look at what was approved in the past, whether a roadway may still need a top course and, um, that isn't finished, um, so maybe that's part of what you're, you're discussing, is a road that's still, because construction's still occurring, it's only at a base, so, that, again, that, that'll be part of, of what we.
Phase, phase one, we had, we recorded every pool, we're gonna get tennis courts, we're gonna get a clubhouse, none of those things have come, come about, we lost all the, and he said, we should have had, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, actually, there's a line forming over there, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Christopher Walsh, Two Pudway, I may license this drinking water treatment plant operator, and I've also got a license in distribution, so, when you hook onto Precinct Street, you can't put a meter, because once you hook on a precinct street, you're now gonna be compot of the distribution system, and the water's just gonna pass through LeBaron Boulevard, so, that wouldn't be able to measure our, our usage, um, but I think the wastewater plant is born of contention with a lot of us, I know that the, the four-story apartment buildings over by CBS just had a catastrophic failure in their wastewater plant, and the repairs estimates are up to 118,000 right now, it could reach as high as 200,000, so, that's why I'm concerned with these four-story buildings, you know, this could be a tremendous, financial liability to the residents that are there now, if something were to happen to that wastewater treatment plant.
Because of the additional, or just the.
Well, the four-story buildings, yeah, the additional, um, and I don't think the four-story buildings belong there.
Because?
Well, because they're too high, I mean, it's.
They're out of count, I think, is what you're saying, so you don't think they look.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with a two-story building, like, that's already there, your property building, but a four-story, just with the aesthetic value, it just takes away from everything, I believe.
Okay, all right.
And that building just looks like a square box.
Honestly, I mean, it's, it's up to you to give us whatever opinions you have, and then we, you know, we just listen, we're not gonna give you a, like, okay, we're gonna tell them, they can only go two stories.
Related to that, can I ask Mohammed something?
Sure.
Um, we're concerned about the aesthetics, would you be willing to add landscape buffers, strips, screening, fencing?
And, and that's usually typical, absolutely.
Okay.
Did I ask a question?
Hang on, ma'am, I'm just gonna, go ahead, Chris.
So, I'm, I'm kinda curious about the four-story, how many units are in, how, how many units count for the four-story?
Uh, eight, no, nine, nine.
Per building?
Each level is nine, nine, nine units, so.
Right, so it'd be 20, 27.
That's correct.
Right, so.
37.
No, he's.
No, there's only three buildings in the last two phases, correct, 27.
Yeah, and you're asking for.
33.
33 additional.
That's correct.
So, what was the need to create a four-story building?
I mean, we were gonna put an elevator in those buildings, and to make the economics work, and when you have.
To reach that 25%.
And when you have a community with those buildings, when you have usually over 100 units, now you can have a resident manager, you can have a resident handyman, so anytime you're less than 100, it doesn't pay to have those things, so from an economic point of view, it makes sense to have, to have more than 100, so you can have more services on the ground, as opposed to higher than from outside.
Right, didn't you get relief from the 25% in earlier stages?
No.
Yes.
The relief was.
Yeah, so you.
The relief was.
You're chasing, chasing it down the road, the, to meet the 25%.
We already meet the 25% with the phases that were approved, the phases going forward are gonna have 25%. So, if you add all the phases that have already been approved, 279 units, 70 are affordable, so, so we already are at the 25%, anything going forward is gonna be at 25%.
Okay, but I'm.
So, the whole, the whole community will be 25% affordable?
Based on the increase to, to 419?
Hang on, hang on, let me, council was punching numbers, so.
Yes, so, um, so, for, um, for the, for the first permit, for under, for the 386 units, um, he needed to have,
97.
Okay, thank you, so he needed 97 units, and out of those four phases, he only has 56 plus six, 50, I'm not good at math.
No.
This is 62, so.
Plus eight, plus eight in phase five.
No, eight, no, eight is phase five, it, the 2004 permit only allowed for four phases.
Right.
So, in those four phases, he ni- he needed to have 97 affordables, he only has 62, and so, what he is, you are correct, what he's doing is he's adding these phases to make up for three and four, there was a modification to allow him to do no affordables on three and four.
Right, so.
However, that.
You asked for relief for that?
Right, in 2016, he did, and so, and in 2016, there was the understanding that there would be a phase five, and a phase five was allowed, but, I still, even if he doesn't add the 33 units, he still can, he still can make up those numbers with what he's providing, he just has to provide more affordables.
Correct, right, so, it's not, it's, he needs more units to subsidize the profits, so to speak.
Right, as he said, the, with 100 units, you, you get, you can get more, I guess.
So, my question is, what is the, why are we being asked to increase the, the number to 33? Like, the four-story building is creating the issue.
I, let me, let me, I think the question, I'm trying to clarify this, so, if there wasn't a four-story, we get rid of those 27 units, you could still accomplish the 25%, you just have to have a higher percentage.
Yeah.
In the last phases to make up for not having it in, in the, in phase three.
No, no, we have 279 units today, can you use your calculator, 279 times point 25, which is 25%, it's 69.5, we have 70 units today that are affordable, we are already at 25%, going forward, everything we build is gonna be at 25%.
No, so, so what he's, what he's, what he's kind of forgetting is, the original permit required 97 affordable units in phases one through four, in phases one through four, he only has 62, he, he's not at 97 in phase one through four, so, he is correct, he is providing 25% in every, in, in subsequent phases, but, by him providing 33 extra units, we're getting, um, 33 divided by four, we're getting eight extra affordable units, so, so, I mean, that, I guess that's, that's what we're getting, we're getting eight, eight affordable units for the extra 33.
Okay, let, let's, let's do this at this point, um, we're kind of, I don't wanna say we're in disagreement, but we have different views of how to calculate our percentages, so, we, again, we're not gonna solve anything this evening, so, we know we need to wrap that around our heads, and we may have to have some discussions in the meantime to clarify and make sure we're on the, on the right path, so, ma'am, I know you've been waiting anxiously, come on up.
And you did answer some of my questions, because it seems to me, would, if it's stuck at 386 units, and you don't give him authority to increase that number. and you don't give him authority to increase that number, would he- I'm sorry.
Would you mind introducing yourself to us?
Karen Manfound, 36 LeBaron Boulevard.
Thank you. And I think they want you to speak up a little bit in the back, so.
They all know me, so. I think that he has-
And they still want you to speak up, huh?
I think that he has plenty of room left to accommodate those 97 40B units that he has already committed to without doing this additional phase, without adding land onto our comprehensive permit. I think he's only doing that because he hasn't been responsible for those commitments that he has already made. I did have, you know, a little thing here that I wanted to read, but a lot of that has been answered, so I'd like to go into the wastewater treatment plant, if you don't mind. I believe Stonebridge said he'd have to make modifications to the existing wastewater treatment plant in order to accommodate the increased number of units. The last upgrade did not go very well. I don't know if you're aware, but in total disregard for the capacity of the existing plant, Stonebridge irresponsibly continued to add homes to that plant until it failed. And that plant was being pumped two and sometimes three times a week, and the residents had to pay 50% of that cost. And it was through his negligence. He should have been made to pay for that, and he didn't. On top of that, we also have an odor problem with the existing plant. I think you'll all agree with that. Now, I took a tour with NSU of that plant. The NSU operator told me we were doing about 20,000 gallons a day, that it was max, the maximum was 66,000, but the optimum was 57,000. He said that the odor problem could be corrected, but it would be expensive. Forty thousand plus dollars for some filter or whatever it was. I don't pretend to understand that. Okay? Stonebridge has been dragging their feet to pay for that filter. They keep saying, well, it's a chemical issue. We addressed that, and this was with the NSU operator, and he said it's masking the problem, but it isn't solving the problem. So are we gonna get stuck with another big, huge bill when he walks away and we still have to resolve that odor issue? Let's talk about the streets.
In a second, I'm gonna just let her, let her go through it, and then we can come back.
Okay. So let's talk about the streets. I don't know if you're aware, you should be, that LeBaron Boulevard is a private road. So here we go, and I've only been there four years. I've been in town 38, but I've been there four. The traffic has done nothing but increase. The big trucks go up and down LeBaron Boulevard every day. And I will give you credit for the fact that I know you told them to go through Country Club Lane when that became available. But they didn't, because Country Club Lane is a swirly road, and it's easier for them to go straight down LeBaron, and that's what they did. In the meantime, it's a private road, so who gets stuck with the repairs and the maintenance for that road after it's been abused by all that heavy machinery? Would you agree to put money into a road maintenance reserve?
You need to direct your, your speed.
Is the town to take those roads on as public roads, as town roads? Because they're private roads now. And once again, when he leaves, we're gonna get stuck with the big bill, right? This is what he always does. So let's talk about the huge ugly buildings.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm giving you a little leeway here. You can just, we don't need to get into giving a novel, so. No, you, I hope you wouldn't use a swear word, so. But if you don't like the look of the buildings, you can tell us you don't like the look of the buildings. We gotta kind of move this along.
None of us like the look of the building, okay? They're too high. There's nothing in the town of Lakeville outside of Kensington Court and Sterling Place, and they're over by the train station. They're not in a residential neighborhood. It's a four-story building in a residential neighborhood. And why? It's, there's, there's no reason for it. There's no reason to add this extra land onto our comprehensive permit. Make him, make him use the land that's already there and come up with the affordable units. There's space for it. He's putting four new buildings on phase five. Thirty-five buildings. He could make those affordable, and would that then give him his correct number?
He would have to make 20 out of 35.
There you go. So why would you make an exception for him instead of an exception for the people that pay taxes in this town? Why? Why would you do that?
Do you have anything else to add, ma'am?
No, I'm sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So. Mohammed, you wanted to make a comment on the waste treatment facility. But what I do wanna, before, before, hang on, before you, before you say that, I, you know, at this point, we've mentioned a number of times, we're gonna have peer review, look at this. So I am, we're going to have peer review, which is not someone working for the developer. Take a look at the waste treatment facility. I've heard of it a number of times now, and someone can come back and tell us it's either good, it's not good, here's what needs to be done with it, it's gonna be able to handle the next phases and whatnot. So we will have somebody outside, independent, that's what the peer review is gonna do, so.
And in addition to that, DEP is the one that permits the wastewater treatment plant. So even if our peer reviewer says he thinks that, or he or she thinks it's fine, DEP says no, it's no. So it is, the ultimate answer is DEP.
Yeah, so this is gonna be oversight. He's not just gonna be able to do what he wants to do. So go ahead, Mohammed.
I actually was gonna invite Don Napert. He, he's one of the neighbors that has daily contact with the, with the treatment plant operator to testify, to actually correct some of the stuff that, that were made. The reason we were getting smell there is that the, the treatment plant has a filter. So air gets filtered, get circulated within the treatment-
Mohammed, I'm gonna cut you off, and I don't mean to be rude. Here's the thing. I don't think the people who think the odor is coming because you're not spending the money, you're not gonna convince them, and vice versa, they're not gonna convince you of something. So I think if we have someone the outside, you know, the peer review takes, reviews it, we'll be- Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, aside from the engineering of the water treatment, what is the financial responsibility of that system as it stands now and as it stands in the future? Who bears the financial responsibility for maintenance, for failure? I'm just unclear as to, the individual each of us, or how does?
So, yeah, we have homeowners association. People get billed based on their water use. They get billed for sewer. So if you use 100 gallons of water, you know, a month, we bill you for 100 gallons of sewer. And the sewer rate is calculated on the expense that the treatment plant had for that month. Now, part of our, of the bidding, part of that money goes to a separate account to allow for future, if there's any failure in the plant. And I think that account currently has 500,000 dollars in it. So in case there's an emergency correction or a failure of some sort, and they can tap into that, that account. And that account is controlled by DEP. So DEP requires that 25% of the cost of the plant be put in an escrow account in case of a failure of the treatment plant, that money can be used. Cannot be used for regular maintenance. It can only be used for a failure, you know, a catastrophic failure.
A question, a question for counsel related to this.
Go right ahead.
Amy, can we require that the new system add, say, 20 to 25% extra capacity to alleviate the current problems? Is that within our review?
No, DEP. It's only DEP.
Anything to do with wastewater is all DEP.
Yeah, because they're under 310 CMR, I think it's 314, and we have nothing. It's 314, it's 314 CMR five.
There is no kind of problems in the plant. What we were talking about, what the, what the lady referred to during the transition period from a smaller system to a big system.
Mohammed, guess what? Here's gonna let us know.
John, John, let's just go through people. We don't need to answer and comment on every, every comment, so.
I got it. You're up, sir. In the green shirt.
David Lodge from 21 Sandy Circle. I had a text from someone here asked, and I thought I heard it earlier, that the affordable units are affordable in perpetuity?
Yes.
They're supposed to be, yes.
They are?
Yes.
And, and the ones going forward will also be?
Yes.
Okay. Could you flip that down to the, to the front sheet? I wanted to ask, the, the concrete plant site that's there, who controls that?
The person behind you is likely.
Okay, all right. And I was just concerned that it was-
Sir, sir, let's stick to the-
Might happen.
Yeah, the concrete plant doesn't have anything to-
Okay, I, I didn't know if, if he owned it-
That's all right, go ahead.
And it was gonna come up later on.
Again, we gotta focus on-
I, no, I understand, I understand. The, can the, can the board lean on the police to enforce, no, no, through traffic on, on LeBaron and Fern through?
You must think we have a lot of power, if you think we're gonna win.
Well, no, I, I know, but, you know, you know, that was kind of one of the things that I thought is, is a-
We can, we can ask for an impact statement from the police department to see if they have any suggestions on what to do. That's about it.
Okay, that would, that would be a, a, a good thing.
Okay.
Part of Fern, Fern Avenue is town right away, isn't it?
Yeah, yes.
It is, okay. But it has to be extended, right?
Yes.
Would the extension be built to town standards, or would all of a sudden it's-
He would be submitting some drawings for, to upgrade Fern Avenue, including drainage and, as we explained before, because the condition is substandard today, so.
Okay. So it would have to be upgraded as part of?
As part of his-
And would he do the, the entire length of Fern to those standards?
Yes.
Even though I think he's adding to Fern beyond?
Yeah, I mean, I think Fern, I think LeBaron Boulevard is pretty close to town standards already, so, again, we'd have to look at his drawings and see.
Okay.
That's what the board, select board had suggested earlier, so.
Yeah. Phase five, you've got one building that, the back of the building faces LeBaron Boulevard. It would be nice if it didn't feel like you were driving through somebody's backyard. So if there was something design-wise that could be done to that building, I think it would be a help. I've got the same comments about phase six. They just don't, they just don't belong there, at least not with that design. And some things can be done to kind of reduce their parent bulk. I'm an architect, so I understand how these things are done. But, and, and one other question would be, you know, could you go to four buildings instead of three? So each of the buildings is smaller. That's, that's, that's pretty much all I had.
Okay, thank you.
The other was that, and-
And we're gonna take care of the wastewater, yeah. Yes, we, yes, we don't need, we know we're gonna take care of having that reviewed. Yes, ma'am.
I only have a couple of things. Everyone has answered most of my questions.
Name and address, please?
Lisa Phillips and the Realtor for PJ Keady.
Okay.
Yep, sorry. I just wanna clarify.
This, you're talking to us.
Okay. The-
Ma'am.
What?
You're talking to us.
Well.
Look, look at us.
Yep, okay. So the phase six, that's coming in from precinct.
Okay, yes.
That's on the right-hand side of Fern. Right?
I believe it's on the right-hand side. Yeah, it's, it's coming in from Fern Ave, off of precinct, yep.
Okay. So my client's comment is that he understands the litigation that went on at the plant and the reasons that the use was abandoned, it was a noise factor. I'm trying to talk loud. But when this development was planned, or at least phase six, phase five and six, you're going down on the right-hand side of Fern, but all the lots on the left-hand side have been impacted. So his comment is that he thinks as the owner of two lots there, that, that that, the town should take into account that he is gonna have great difficulty selling that because of, you know, some of these improvements.
He feels, he feels it's gonna be a negative impact on his property.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing is, is that I'm sure the residents would love to see the town put that into a park, or maybe it could be used for more, you know, cleaned up and used for more units. More affordable, 55. It, it's just that there's a total of four lots on the left-hand side. Two are heatings. One is, I forgot the name. And then the last one is the auto place. So, but he has, my client has the two closest to these developments. And I'm really pro on developments as long as, you know, everything works for everybody. And I know that's hard, but I just, I don't think he, he feels that it wasn't considered.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Gary Campbell, 14 Hybrid. My concerns are basically with, I won't kick some of the horses that are already being kicked around already here, but my concern with phase five, 14 Hybrid, for those of you familiar with the lot right now, I have the yellow construction trailer and the satellite Home Depot right directly behind my house. Is there a setback dimension the engineer could give for the fence line on, what's that, LeBaron Boulevard to the proposed front building on phase five? If, if there's a dimension, I'd like the board to consider the impact on our properties for the line of sight for those units looking right into our backyard. Also, where are the garages are on those units? Are they backing right out into the, into, into traffic, basically? If it's approved, I'm just asking the board take consideration into the line of sight into our yards and whatever configuration setback you can impose to minimize that. Be greatly appreciated, thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Walker from Two Ironwood, and I have a clarifying question first before I ask my question. I have in front of me the modification of the comprehensive permit from August 31st, 2018. Is that the most recent modification? Or was there one at the old?
There was one in 2020 that was very minor, had to do with sidewalks.
Oh, yes, yeah, okay. So the one that I'm looking at, I'm referring to points eight and nine from the modification from 2018, and that's referencing mitigation measures that the developer agreed to as a part of the original comprehensive permit. And this is saying that the town has just, originally, they were, they had agreed to 3,200 linear feet of concrete sidewalk down Precinct Street to connect the senior center to Fern Ave, and then the town decided they didn't wanna do that. And so my question is, what mitigation post-community agreement has been made, if any? And this seems like, like that it would require even more of a mitigation agreement with the town? Because I'm curious what, what, what has been done and what has been agreed to since this one was no longer. And I believe in the 2020, there wasn't anything. But it's in, like I said, on, it's bullet points eight and nine from 2018.
Correct, you're right, I do remember them getting rid of the sidewalk, because it wasn't gonna go anywhere. I'm not sure if anybody-
Yeah, I, I can answer that, of course.
Knows what we-
So would we have a meeting with members of the select board of selection? So, would we have a meeting, uh, with members of the, uh, select board of selectmen? And we agreed, we got two proposals, uh, from, uh, two old guys to give us a proposal for the sidewalk on Precinct Street. And the average came out to like $240,000 or something. And we agreed to make a $300,000 payment to the town for two, after grading those sidewalks. So, so there is, it's not formalized yet, but this was a, an agreement, and Richard, you were in the meeting, and, and, you know. So, so there's a, 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 an agreement of sort with the town to pay them $300,000, to pay the town $300,000.
So basically, in lieu of the cost for the sidewalk, the town is going to get-
And we have two, two proposals from the old guys, and the average was like $240,000. But we, we, I guess, the town manager and Richard bumped it up to $300,000.
So they're trying to get a, we're trying, we're trying to get a little more out of it than the $240,000. And you've agreed to that in principle. Hasn't been executed yet, but that's the plan.
It's not designed as an agreement.
Okay.
And then my-
It's really dependent on the final, the final co-决定.
Um, and then my final, I guess, comment to the board to consider is that there have been many, many promises made to the residents, uh, in this, in that community in particular that we have not seen come to fruition. So for example, your question about landscaping is frankly laughable. Um, if you've come and looked through, they've had many challenges with landscaping, including not having water to irrigate the new landscaping that are put in, it's dying. Um, new hydro seed gone down that it's not gonna grow because there's no, nothing to water it. Um, so there are many promises that have been made, and so I just implore upon you to consider how are we going to make sure that these things that he's promising to make us feel better about the, the, you know, major substantial changes that we're making to this comprehensive permit are actually going to happen.
So, my comment to that is, and someone feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. If it's in the comprehensive permit, for example, that certain landscaping and screening is supposed to be done, if it's in that permit, the town can make sure or follow up, um, through the building commissioner-
Enforce it, correct.
Would that be, can enforce it. So, what my suggestion is, whatever you think isn't happening that's in the comprehensive permit, whether it's this modification or something in the past, let the town know, and we will make sure that it gets-
Because it's my understanding that the HOA has a long list of things that we are waiting to be finished.
Now, again, keep in mind-
Right.
It's one thing if it's promised when you bought the house or bought the unit or whatnot.
But if it's in a contract, a written agreement-
Well, hang on, if it's in a written agreement between you and the person you're purchasing it from, that's between you and the person. If it's in the comprehensive permit-
That's between the town.
That's, then we can get involved.
Right, alright, thank you.
Question for council related to that, or Mark?
Mm-hmm.
Can we, um, see if he's met all these requirements for the special permit? Can we add that to this?
We cannot add that to this, that would be an enforcement.
Okay, yeah, we can do that outside of this.
And I, I do have it in my notes to ask Nate to look at the plans from the original. To see about the amenities and some of the stuff.
Not to add to his list, he's got a big one?
Yes, but-
Good evening, Attorney Tom Gay, I represent Eric and Rebecca Jenkins. They live at 84 Precinct Street. They're a director butter, uh, behind one of the 36-unit apartments that are posed here. Some things I just, they've been brought up, I think the board, um, should consider is, if they do have to design a septic system for those buildings, the proximity of the septic system for that many units with the water source, public water source across the road. So groundwater studies, DEP will be involved, obviously, but I would stress that the town have their peer review engineer look at that, have the board of health look at that, because that's a consideration for the community at large. There's been a little talk about screening of the property, but I think, you know, detailed on landscaping, fencing, things that can try to mitigate this development for an abutment. The proposed development is right behind my client's house, if you go there now, it's a wooded, um, area with a big berm behind it. You know, they're gonna be extracting a significant amount of gravel to put this building there. So looking at the size of the building, the height of the building, the design of the building, anything that you can do and can help to reduce this visual impact on the residents, I think would be, you know, within your peer review and hopefully something that the developer would want to do. Going back and looking at the history of it, Fern Ave has always been considered to be an emergency access roadway. Through the, the comprehensive permit history and the minutes, everything I could see, it was never intended to be, uh, a primary access for this site. And we're talking about additional 33 units, um, for the whole site opposed to what was originally permitted. So if there is a way of not, um, committing Fern Road to be a, another primary access point, you know, that would be something that would be beneficial to anyone that lives on Precinct Street and specifically my client who abuts Precinct Street and Fern Road. If, if it is gonna go that way, um, I think a traffic study needs to be performed to make sure that it's not only gonna, it not impact the abutters in a way, but it's safe. We're talking about a significant amount of traffic flow onto a road that has essentially zero. You know, I know this is a long process and, you know, we'll monitor, but I wanted the board to think about those considerations when you're deliberating on this project.
Thank you, I think, I think we did on most of those, and between traffic studies and reviews, we should probably be able to address any of those concerns.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else on that line? Okay, we got two more.
Good evening. I'm here to make a statement, I represent the Blackburn family. I'm W. Lee Blackburn, and I'll give a copy of this to your secretary if you like.
Great.
My wife is with Nick Claire Blackburn. We've had less than a week of notification about this hearing. The letter arrived in our mailbox last Saturday, was addressed to our son Ralph Blackburn, who is currently out of state, or he would be here with him. Claire was able to find a copy of the proposed plan for this development, uh, on the town website. Crowding three very large buildings into such a small area, I don't believe is practical. It will not add to the rural character of Lakeville. We need more trees, less pavement, and smaller buildings. There needs to be a wooded buffer between our properties, not digging right up to the property line that we own, and inserting retention walls on a steep hill as shown on this plan. In other areas where we abut their property, there is a reasonable buffer now. That style of buffer needs to be carried on along the, around that corner, in our opinion. It also appears that the contour of the land is so steep that it will prevent a fire truck, a ladder truck, from being able to reach all sides of building number three. Not gonna be able to get behind it, and for about half of the size of the building. We have many wild animals living in our 13-plus acres of woods which abuts this property. There's deer, turkeys, coyotes, woodchucks, skunks, rabbits, and foxes, to name a few. Where will they go? Is it the goal to clear cut the woods in Lakeville? We ask that an environmental impact study be done relative to this proposal. If this plan goes forward, we need to have a solid fence along the property line between our property and their property to keep the wild animals in and to keep trespassers from entering our property. We have game cameras in our woods. In addition to seeing the wild animals, we see people trespassing and removing signs on our property. We use our woods to provide fuel. Firewood for home heating purposes for our three family homes. Inclusion and inconclusion, we ask that this petition be denied or at least continued. Thank you.
What was your address, sir?
23 Loom Pond Road.
Thank you.
And nine, and 11, and 15, seriously, and 19, and 21, I always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like a copy?
Sure. Do we have any other questions from the board at this point? I believe we don't have anyone else up to speak. Come on up.
My name is Lynn Roach, I live at 18 LaBarren. Already, uh, you talked about the width of the road and if it could be accepted. Already, um, we were told when we first moved in, because I moved in in 2008, that there would never be school buses going down our road. Now, and we know for the last two years, school buses now go down the road because of a single-family dwellings. I have no problem with that. But, you, we have to consider that, uh, if you're gonna use Fern, it has to be a properly widthed road so that we have no problem. I mean, the vote, uh, the, the school buses now come in from the cottage, cottage street, cottage road, country club road, and go out the other way at LaRe, LaBarren. So they're gonna go in one way and go out the other. And, and that way it's a safety, it's safety, so people are not waiting at, at the front, which they used to do until the road, until the school buses go through.
Yeah, it's been brought up.
So we just wanna make sure that, if you're considering-
We will look and make sure that Fern Ave is properly sized and can handle the traffic coming in and out of there.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, did you have some, okay.
Yes.
Last one, I'd like to wrap this up at 9:30, just so we don't go forever.
There's no last call.
There's no last call here, but I still need to make last call.
Let, let me know where we're going, continue after. My name is William O'Connor, I live at 8th Pumper Lane. I'm sure it's within ordinance, um, but I don't know what is the local ordinance for overall height of these buildings? And I'm sure by engineering standard it meets, but can anybody tell me what that ordinance is?
I don't know it off the top of my head.
35 feet.
35 feet? And the building heights are by architectural standard? What, what's their heights?
Would you know that, you wouldn't know that, right, Jason, or would you?
I think it's 42.
Probably, probably close to 40.
Yeah. Again, what, I think he's referring to residential, so, yeah.
What are we zoning here? Residential, like commercial, what's the zoning?
Well, counsel, can you, yeah, can you respond to the zoning question?
Sure, so, so under 40B, they're allowed to, uh, they're allowed to ask for waivers from the zoning bylaw. So they would be asking for a waiver for multifamily development within a residential zone. They would be asking for a waiver from height, a waiver from setbacks, a waiver from parking, quite a few waivers.
Lot size?
Yep, a waiver from lot size, most likely. Well, I mean, and that, that depends, because if they own these lots, they all get merged, I mean, so they, they would, they would provide, they're gonna provide the board with a list of waivers that they're requesting. And the board, in its decision, when it makes its decision, it goes through each waiver to grant the waiver or deny the waiver.
Fairly wide open, then? In, in context of what they asked.
Yes, a 40B, a 40B is designed to allow zoning be relaxed to provide for affordable housing.
I, I asked, I just moved here, uh, about a year ago, and I'm from out of state, so not familiar with what those laws are. Last closing question or comment I have. At the beginning, Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned that for this zoning board to say no, outright say no to these proposed buildings, it's a very high threshold. What is that threshold?
I don't think there's a definitive threshold as such, but I'll let counsel-
So, yes, so the threshold is, is that there has to be a valid local concern, and the local concern has to be, um, health or safety reasons. And the one, um, development, the one denial that went all the way up to the Supreme Judicial Court and was upheld was in Stowe, Massachusetts, where they have no, um, they have no public water, no public sewer, and the developer was proposing a very large septic system right near public, uh, right near private wells. And that was considered to be a health concern, and, um, that, that's about it.
Would that fall under that 1%?
Yes.
From earlier this evening? So where this last gentleman just spoke in that abutment up to the taunton water reservoir that sits across the street, would that be grounds inside the impact study for, um, a threshold, if you will, for better or worse?
The difference here is that we're, we're talking about a wastewater treatment plan which is highly regulated by DEP. A septic, a large septic system is not highly regulated by DEP. So, one of the other, um, one of the other speakers brought up, um, the fact that if we, if there is a septic system for phase six, that that be reviewed, um, you know, by the Board of Health and this board and peer review, which it will be reviewed by Board of Health under Title V. So, just, uh, just one extra thing. A 40B, uh, this board can waive local, um, local bylaws, it cannot waive any state regulations. So, um, with regard to the Wetland Protection Act, which is a state act, they will have to follow that, and Title V is a state act, they will have to follow, follow that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kim.
Welcome to Massachusetts.
There was all 40Bs, there was the 56 units, are they all 40Bs?
Yes.
Yes. Well, they're all affordables.
Are they all 40Bs?
Yeah, the project is 40Bs, you're talking about affordables, so. And rentals count 100%.
Yep.
So.
I have a core question.
Go ahead.
This is the end of the question, all right?
That's what the last guy said, go ahead. Amy Anderson. Come on up, come on up, we need the, the speakers here, name and address.
Mike Kennedy, 8 Boogie Way.
Okay.
Why does Fern Ave, Fern Ave have to be annexed to this, uh, community, LaBarren community?
They're requesting it, and we haven't made a determination at this point. So if you'd like to be on the record as saying you wouldn't like it to be used as, as an entrance or an exit, you can make that statement and it-
Right, I represent the, uh, one of the HOAs at, um, LaBarren, and the big question to us is, the use, why use Fern Ave as a means of, uh, justifying additional buildings, whether they're 40B or not? That's our question to the-
To Mohammed?
And to the board.
Well, your concern is taken under advisement, so. Okay. Board members, anyone else have any other questions at this point? Okay, so, I guess between Mark and/or Amy, would, let's just clarify what we're going to, um, we're gonna get peer review on wastewater. We're gonna get peer review on-
We, we, um, so, um, the applicant has, um, agreed to provide a traffic study, an updated traffic study or new traffic study. So we would want that peer reviewed by a traffic engineer. Um, we would like, we need civil, um, to determine where there's gonna be snow storage, what the turning radius is, what the screening would be, um, and we would need, um, someone to look at the wastewater treatment, which would also, that would be under civil.
Right, so-
For the architectural?
You could do architectural, too.
Hang on, Mark?
I was just gonna say, you know, I'll probably have to meet with Mohammed and his engineer on trying to provide, the additional information so we can have a more comprehensive package to have peer reviewed and, um, also discuss many of the items that have been brought up and how to address some of them, uh, you know, through design here, and, um, and so that, uh, you know, at the next hearing, although we won't have, um, agreement and/or solutions and/or review of all of the items, you know, several, you know, ideas and proposals will, will be able to be discussed, and, um, and then, you know, and, and then it'll get reviewed further, you know. So this will be multiple meetings, um, and it's, it'll be a process, but eventually, the board will get to, toward a decision.
Okay, Jerry, did you wanna make a recommendation to, did you wanna?
I wanted to add in the architectural review as part of the civil comprehensive review.
Traffic, other board members? Thank you. Are you concerned about that? No.
Is that in our preview? Architectural review, is that in our preview?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's in the, it's in the, um, it's in the regulations under peer reviews.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Um, so-
You guys bid with it?
Yes.
You wanna? Okay. You have a consensus.
So usually, um, um, Davis Square architects are the ones that, um, usually do peer reviews for municipalities. So we can reach out to them.
Okay, we can work the details out after we reach out to, but-
I think landscaping was a big issue as well, landscaping sightlines, buffer strips-
And that would be under civil.
Under civil, very good, thank you.
Yeah. So, um, I guess what we would do is at your next regular meeting, hopefully Mark can reach out to, um, to, uh, civil engineer. A lot of the times a civil engineers will have a traffic engineer, and then, um, architecture. And then, when is your next regular meeting?
September 15th.
So, at, in the, at the- So at, in the, at the September 15th meeting, you can accept the proposals. They can provide proposals by September 15th. And then during your, during your, just your business section, you know, your administrative area of your meeting, you can just accept those proposals. Once, once the applicant funds the peer review account, the peer review can start. And then, so I would suggest the next meeting be either the very end of September or beginning of October. So that will allow the peer reviewers to have comments.
That work for, Mark, you, that work for you?
Or? Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I mean, timeframe-wise, do we think that's going to, are we going to have enough time?
Well, I, again, I don't know whether we'll have everything in and everything peer reviewed by, I mean, it'll probably be by your October meeting, you might be able to have that done. You know, we can give, you can continue the hearing. I can, we can give you a progress update at the next meeting in September and tell you, inform the board where we're at, Mohammed can explain.
If Mohammed's going to come, it has to be a public hearing.
That's, that's what I'm, yeah.
So you're going to continue to the next hearing?
Yes, I would, I would suggest that we do that in case there's a reason to discuss something that needs to be submitted or there's, needs to be a discussion about what that would be.
That's fine, I'm good with continue, we can continue it to the next.
Yeah, I mean, it may not be a long portion of the meeting, but-
If we have stuff ready, we can discuss it, if not, we continue.
You won't have peer review.
Right.
No, we won't have it completed, that's correct.
I don't think getting all these people back here for the next meeting would be- Can we go two meetings? Can we go, can I make a motion to continue to the October meeting then? And then get an update from Mark as where do we stand on, on peer review at that point?
So you won't be able to accept a, a peer review proposal until September 15th? That, because that's your next meet, that's when you meet again.
Okay, so we should continue to that meeting just to accept it?
Well, you don't even have to, it's not part of the public hearing. You can just do it on your agenda, you could just put on your agenda. And then it's however long the peer review would take, and usually, I mean, a month is fine.
Couple months, yeah.
Yeah. So September, so to continue the public hearing to October would work unless, unless you wanted to continue to the 15th and talk about-
I don't think we'll be ready, but it's up to the board. I mean, if we continue to the 15th, we would post as a public meeting.
Public hearing, yeah.
A public hearing, and developer is here, and if we don't have anything to discuss other than accept the peer review, we're just going to continue it again at that point, so.
Right.
I guess there's no danger in continuing until September, just realizing that it's going to be posted, people may show up, and if all we have is the peer review to accept, that's all that's going to happen.
Yeah.
So.
So you want to make that motion again? I'd go make a motion to October, not to September. I don't want to get all these people back here for just a continuance, another continuance. So I would make a motion to continue to the October meeting and then ask for Mark for an update on peer review in September.
Okay, I have a motion. I'll second.
What, what day is October? What day, what October? The 20th. Okay, thanks.
I'll second that motion. Okay, so would you say October what?
20th.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue to October 20th, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. So we'll continue till October, but we will hopefully have the peer review to accept by the September meeting. All right, I do not see anything else on our agenda for this evening, so we have no reason to go into executive session. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Send motion.
I'll second.
We have a first, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we adjourned at 9:37.
Nice job, Mr. Chairman.